Okay, we are gonna go ahead and call together, call to order this committee meeting for Public Works. Today's April fifteenth and it's five thirty-two. So we'll get started with the committee looks like is all present, Eric Marshall and Mike Klein. Okay, today we are doing this committee because we had an ordinance sent to us for review, which is on the requiring the paving of all city alleys with rolled asphalt. For the city of Marion, we did post the meeting and I know at least a couple of us posted the ordinance online to try and get some feedback, which I didn't, hadn't seen any yet as of today. I've got copies of the ordinance on the bench up there if anybody wants to see a copy. And our hope was to get some feedback from individuals within the city to see what their thoughts are on paving versus rock alleys. And then we'll discuss, then as time permits, we'll discuss some maybe changes or languages, if any, from the committee. Any opening remarks from anyone before we get going? Nick, did you wanna preference at any with your thoughts on it? Anything different, I guess?
Yeah. Let me mute here. Yeah, I just challenge, so if you haven't read it, just make sure you read it all the way through, because what I find is I'll get questions asked and I'll go, well, it's addressed in the ordinance. So it's not just saying they all have to be paved. There are caveats and there are exceptions. I just challenge that you make sure whoever's got a question or whatever, just read through it thoroughly. If anything that just pushes the plan, I will say, I will add on that, you know, as of today, there's some new state laws that have changed tax collection and all that. That's gonna come in a factor on a lot of things that we're gonna be talking about soon. So I do keep that in mind as well. I'm not asking for the city to just go spend a bunch of money. What I'm really pushing for is just let's have a plan, let's have a discussion. And I want, I just wanted everyone in the community to have an opportunity to speak.
Well, and to give a little bit of feedback, we did talk some about paving alleys when we were putting together money through the budget process as far as when we were paving streets, if you recall, and talking about sidewalks and then putting money aside for alleys. At that time, we were presented with some general estimates from Mike Graff about what the costs would be if we did rock versus asphalt versus if it was just an overlay, if we had to take it all the way back down and do full pavement of alleys. And I believe this year we've had quite a few done that were replaced with stone and some that were taken, that were paved and some that were broken up pavement and changed to stone. Is that correct, from what I remember? Okay. But that plan, that initial estimate, I think if we had done all of the alleys at once and they were all asphalt, was gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of ten million dollars, nine million to ten million dollars? That sound right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. And so that's some of the conversation that started this with this ordinance, because it puts a ten-year timeline on it, which was some of, I think, we wanted to do a discussion, because that would be roughly a million a year, not accounting for any type of inflation, which as Nick said, there may be some changes into the amount of money that we would have to put into this, which would extend that timeline even longer. So, any other comments from the council? Or do we just wanna, or we can open it up and see what the public that's here wants to speak on and questions they may have that we may not have thought about?
I just wanna add, I did have a printout, I was trying to find something to put on the screen here, the printout Mike Graff put together, it's great. We had from last year for three options. Of course, it's not a one-size-fits-all, but it just for the public, to the cost, to just mill down an asphalt alleyway and replace it with, you know, a new top coat, four inches, actually, it's mill down four inches, put three inches of a new binder, one new surface. So I think it was average cost, depending on the length of the alley, was about fourteen thousand dollars per alley. Of course, that's gonna change with different stretches and the tonnage. If you actually converted an alley like a street and actually milled down eight inches and put stone and then like you would a street, it's about twenty thousand dollars an alley. And then the, just so everyone has the numbers, if you just milled it out and put stone down, you're looking at about twenty-five hundred dollars an alley. So that's just the numbers I wanna share.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and open it up for any public comments or discussion, if anybody's here that wants to speak on alleys, rock versus paving, the, what they feel might be the benefit of going to all paving or if the way that the rock, the new rock alleys seem to be working well in certain areas. I do have a sign-in sheet, but I realized I didn't put a pen up there, just so that we can have your name and address for the minutes to keep a good record of that. If you don't mind, we will keep to a general timeline. And if it ends up people carrying on too much, then we'll cut that off. We do only have about an hour before the next meeting. And all you need to do is turn, put the red button on so that we can hear.
Okay, thank you. My name is James Shelton. I'm a resident of eleven oh-nine South Galveston Street here in Marion. And the first thing I'm gonna say like this, our alley was paved until they tore it up and put gravel in it. And when we got down there, it took us over six or seven years to get it paved. And my understanding is just like this, why would they tear up a perfectly good alley to put stone in it? This is my thing. You know, if you go and put stone in it, make sure the alley needs the stone. Last time we had stone in that alley, we had ruts in there so deep that I'd just go back to my knees in it, in the alley. And when they put the pavement in it, it been, shoot, I bet you it been lasted almost thirty-something years. And it was still in excellent shape. And that's, you know, I said, that's pretty good idea. If, I know you're not gonna be able to do all the alleys at once, you know, each year do certain amount. But if you look at the long-term, hey, this alley, the last thirty years, they ain't had to come patch it, put gravel in it and nothing like that. And there's people go up and down that alley all the time. But now, we're gonna have the instance where they're gonna have back like it was, having big old craters in alley and the city doesn't get around. I used to work for the city back in the seventies and eighties. And I worked on them crews too, they went out there and did that. I worked on the back of garbage truck and doing, you know, where you had to haul trash and you bouncing in the alley because they wouldn't fix it. Or they didn't have the budget to fix it. I'm not saying that, you know, what's what. But as, you know, concerned, I got petition to give to the mayor for our block, that the alley was tore up, that these, that all the residences in that particular block, once that alley put back the pavement. But it's just like this, I understand there's costs and everything, but it's more cost in getting that than here, here next year, you probably have to go through the alleys and pour more gravel in it to smooth it out because it's got dents in it and places in it that gravel moves. If it ain't got a place to stop it from moving, it's gonna move, move out of the way. Ain't gonna make dents and grooves and things in it. And then it's gonna go everywhere. You know, in the yard, when you're trying to mow and everything else, so that's all I have to say. I hope y'all vote to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Jan Bowen, ten eleven West Fifth Street. And I am all in favor of paving the alleys. When I first moved here ten years ago, I had to do a lot of work in the back part of my property next to the alley. And our alley is, well, it's, I think it's like most, it started out with the bricks, then it was paved and now it's got holes and it's a big mess. Not only that, but the grass and the ground has grown over the sides. So the alley, I don't know how wide it should have been or, you know, from curb to curb, it's now at least four feet narrower than what it should be. So yes, I'm in favor of the, definitely of paving and not rocks, because when I moved in and had the work done in the back of my property, I couldn't afford to have it paved, so I put the rocks in. And, you know, you're always carrying in that white dust from your, from where you park. Also, in the section four, I see you have a number two. It says, "The city may establish cost-sharing programs." What would that be?
And that's some of what the discussion is right now. We're not sure what that would look like or what that would be. This is just language that's put in there to allow, if that was a direction the city wanted to go, that they could, my understanding at least, that the cost-saving or the cost-sharing programs would be similar to, like a fifty-fifty sidewalk program or something along those lines.
Yeah, well, I could see if there was, you know, if a whole block was maybe two residences, then I could see where that would be necessary. But then another part, I was wondering if, would it be possible, when our alley is going to be paved, could we have, could we make arrangements to have the area where we park also paved and pay for it? So, I mean, that's something to think about anyway. Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name's Kyle Whitman. I live at thirty-one ten South Race Street. So my alley is between thirty-first and thirty-second Race and Shelby. I've gone to hold of, people have taken pictures using the apps. We got a tree at the end of our driveway, big, our alley, big cottonwood, right on the easement. Lost limbs, big limbs, I've cleaned it up. The problem that we have is a lot of abandoned properties where we have, where I live or the properties are tied up in legal because somebody passed away and now it's left to their kids and there's problems with them and stuff of that nature. We've had a lot of illegal dumping in our alley and stuff. I've cleaned that up. I got overgrowth, you know, I've went down every year. I'm cleaning it up and stuff. Scratching my truck, you know, when I come down my alley, who's responsible for that? You know, I mean, and everyone's like, well, you know, if you're using the alley, you need to be the one cleaning it up. Well, it's not my property. I mean, I have, my property, I'm cleaning it up. I oughta be able to use the alley without scratching my vehicle. I'm cleaning up the trash. I've even stopped city workers driving down my road that have the dump truck, the Dodge. It's like, hey, I got a bunch of illegal dumping right back here in the alley. Could you guys come back? I'll help you load it. Oh, you need to take pictures and send it to the city. You work for the city. I'm letting you know. What is ten minutes out of your time to come back there, clean it up when you're on my road? I don't understand. Another thing that I sat there, I was listening, you guys said that you have a quote for ten million dollars, twenty thousand dollars an alley if they take it down and stuff of that nature. You guys need to get other quotes. I could literally pour concrete the length of our alley and it wouldn't cost twenty thousand dollars. I know that, you know, I'm in that business. So if they're saying asphalt, asphalt's cheap, twenty thousand dollars. And then if you guys are putting down stone and stuff, I can pull a triaxle in, two loads, you know, one loads, ten ton. You run that down, you get two loads, that's twelve hundred dollars. You guys are getting taken, you need other quotes and stuff. I mean, ten million dollars, you guys need to take other quotes. I personally don't want stone down in my driveway or in the alley because I drive down it, plow it and stuff like that. You ever plowed stone? That stuff sucks. And it's just gonna cost more money. So, that's all I have. You got a pen?
Yep, thank you.
You got a pen for over here? A pen?
Can I come back up and say something? Can you see by me a point here?
I thank you for reminding me this. Me? No, no. Okay, you know who I am. On that fifty-fifty deal, I don't like it, period. I've been in my house ever since nineteen eighty-seven, haven't had nothing done to my area at all except with this paving. They paved the street. That's the only thing ever been done in my area where I live at for that many years. And the sidewalks and everything are gone. I'm not paying no fifty-fifty for it to do something that, I'm paying taxes and nobody's doing nothing in my area. I paid for all them years. And if you ain't gonna do nothing in my area, why should I have to pay for you to, for something that you should be doing anyway? You understand what I'm saying? And that's, that is not right. If you know what I'm talking about, there's a lot of areas that people paying all these taxes all these years and haven't did nothing. And that's not fair to us.
Okay, thank you. Any other others here to speak? Go ahead.
I just had a question. First off, on the definitions, I noticed that there's nothing for what the rolled stone is. You have the paving, it seems like you, we kinda ignored that as an option under what the definition is of what the rolled stone is. You have rolled asphalt, but nothing about the stone, how much it is, how deep it is or anything like that. The second thing I would, I would like to add, I'm not opposed to the alleys. I'm not. But what I am concerned about is prioritizing the funds that have to be used by the Public Works to maintain the roads, the sidewalks, and now the alleys. There's only so much of a pie that's in there. So that, that's the part that has to be figured out and brought forward and a little bit more transparency as to how many more roads do we need to do? People don't want to pay the extra for the alleys, they don't wanna pay extra for the sidewalks. So the money that you have for that is, is just limited. So you have to prioritize, and that's my concern. Are we singularly focused on just the alleys and the paving of them? Or are we looking at the global view of all what needs to be done as far as the infrastructure to make this, make this happen? The second thing, the final thing that I wanted to say was it's roughly ten million dollars, if you account for inflation or whatever, over that timeframe, over a ten-year period. What happens if there's a change in administration and it's not budgeted? What gives then? Was it the roads that gave? Was it the sidewalks that gave? Or the alleys just get ignored again? So I think there needs to be more of a comprehensive plan to make sure that it's inclusive of everything. And that's all that I can say.
If I could add, so if you do the four inches down with three inches of new binder and inch of surface, without adjusted inflation, it's six point six million. So the nine to ten million is paving the alleys as if like the roads are going all the way down, starting all over. So if you do four hundred and sixty-three alleys, yeah, it's on the paper. Times fourteen thousand three hundred and eighty-five, that's six point six million. Let's just say you did a ten-year plan. You're about six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars a year. If you go to a twenty-year plan, cut that in half, you're looking at about three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty thousand a year that you'd be spending on alleys. That's if you replaced every alley every twenty years. And as we know, I mean, there's plenty alleys that are twenty-five, thirty years old that are just fine still. So that's assuming, it's a big assumption that we actually need to replace them all. If we also budget to, if we provide, you know, Mike and the mayor some money in the budget for maintenance, maybe these alleys will last even longer, right? So it's, I don't sit here and blame anybody that's with the city now. I just, as Mr. Creech has said, I just don't know if it's been prioritized, different mayors, which is exactly why I'm bringing this up today.
Hello, my name's Marcus Riggsby. I'm a good friend and neighbor of Blood Shelton for over twenty years, a neighbor for over fifteen years. I live two houses down from him. My other neighbor, John, is here as well this evening. To start with the alley that we have now, which is rock, you can't drag a jack on it if you wanted to change your own tire out behind your garage. I have a garage and with a small car, I cannot pull into my garage with a small car, which means I, I will never get a truck into my garage from the alley, from the way it's built and where it's at in the distance between the alley and the garage. So that means I gotta do a multi-point turn with the steering axle, which disturbs gravel every single time. The moment you do a multi-point turn on gravel, it disturbs the gravel. That's every time I enter my garage, if I use it for parking, just for parking, okay? So if I want to, instead of try to pull a truck into my garage, which will never go into my garage, and I jack it up, take the tire off, take it, get it fixed, bring it back, you cannot pull a jack across gravel. Go ahead and try it and see, you know, an older person try it. It's their own property, it's their own tools, it's their own facilities. They should be able to use the alley to jack a vehicle up, take the tire off, get it fixed, bring it back, and it be functional. The alley that we had was at least thirty years old and did not need replaced. The alley that we have is already not flat. The first big rain we get and one of these utility trucks that comes down and works on the utility poles in the back, the internet poles in the back, that weigh two, three, four, five, six tons per truck. When they send two or three trucks down one alley, made of gravel in the rain, how long you think that's gonna last? It's gonna last thirty years? Maybe? With no cars driving down it, it'll never last thirty years. So you can go down our alley and see that it's not flat now and it's just been done. So it's gonna be, need to, need to be done every single year at twenty-five hundred dollars per time, even if it's half-priced just to maintain it. We can do the quick math on that real fast and it's already over twenty thousand dollars in twenty years, just for the gravel that we have right now that was just put back. So we've gotten, for the tax dollars that some of us have been playing in the same location for the better part of a century almost, gotten less alley than we had before. Our, the road in front of our homes was brick and that brick is very close to a hundred years old and in many places that brick didn't need touched. It was level, it was flat, the brick is not damaged. It's the high-quality brick that was still there and still is underneath the rolled asphalt that we got to just pave right over it. They didn't go down eight inches and dig that brick up, they just paved right over it. So when we had curbs, now we don't have curbs, which means, you know, there's less deviation or separation from the road and the curb and the street. If you wanna get to the sidewalk and fifty-fifty idea behind the sidewalks and the alleys, where it shows on the second page here, where the, the city may establish cost-sharing programs with property owners where applicable, there are plenty of alleys, as our fellow community member mentioned. There are not residences that even exist on the block. The blocks are no longer full of houses with people who earn an income that can be able to have disposable income to contribute to the sidewalk, let alone the alley. My block, for example, we have one, two, we have four houses on one side, right next to each other, two empty lots and then a house on the end. That's on, those houses are inhabited. So that's five out of seven or eight different lots on the one side of the block. On the, that'd be the west side of the block. On the east side of the block, there is one house that's inhabited. Is that correct? Your house? One lived-in house on the other side of the block. So one house gets the opportunity to pay fifty percent of the cost of his sidewalk, his section of the sidewalk. Is that gonna be sixteen feet? Is that gonna be the whole quarter of a block? Is that gonna be his half of the block because he's the only guy living there? Should, should we pay less because we have six people living on our side of the block and his fifty percent is a much larger portion than ours? Is that everybody on the block combined? What if the block's got three inhabited residences on it? And how many of those people are either disabled or retired or, you know, don't have two working incomes, full-time incomes? Back when the streets were put in a hundred years ago, back when the alley was put in a hundred, our alley would be thirty, thirty-five years ago, give or take. In the last thirty-five years, you've had two people contributing to that income. But when these houses were built, who paid for the sidewalks back then? Was that part of the mortgage? Is that part of the tax that's been paid for a hundred years now to get those sidewalks replaced? They ain't been replaced in a hundred years? Because that's why there are no sidewalks there, they're gone. There's nothing to fix, they need to be completely removed and redone. And somebody paid for them a hundred years ago and I'm pretty sure it wasn't the person who had the mortgage on the new house. And mine was nineteen twenty-two, nineteen twenty-one. I think all of ours in that four-house section are about the same age. And at the end of the day, they were not responsible. I'm pretty sure they didn't pay for their own sidewalks when they had the houses, you know. So where'd the hundred years of tax dollars go to maintain any sidewalk in any twenty-year block or twenty-five-year block? You know, we're already a quarter of the way to the twenty, twenty-second century. You know, this is twenty-five years into the next century from now. And this has been, you know, the taxes are not new, they're not going away. Where'd it go? You know, who's paying for this stuff? We had a, 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 a street out front that lasted a hundred years and we now have rolled asphalt over that might last twenty, if it's not chopped up every year for the next twenty years to get to what's underneath it, which still is brick underneath it. And the brick's not going anywhere either and it was flat enough to pave right over at least. So that lasted a hundred years. The asphalt will not, especially the one on the main street out front. In the alley, it'll last thirty, thirty-five years. And it's a lot longer than rock. That's gonna need done every year, especially in the higher traffic alleys, the ones in the certain areas of the neighborhood where the city that have more crime. If you ever watched or paid any attention to the police pursuing individuals within our community, they're not avoiding the alleys and they're not avoiding, and they're not they're not avoiding the alleys and they're not avoiding, and they're not driving down the alleys at 10 miles an hour. You know, you can see at one time and see that that's not gonna do very good for long-term care of the alley when someone is speeding faster than the speed limit out front down the rock gravel alley that we have now. So not only are they completely unusable if you wanted to just jack a tire up in your own alley behind your own garage, but they're gonna need to be redone. Maintenance cost is gonna exceed the original 20,000 estimate on the high end.